Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Bring it over here, please.
Welcome to January 20th council meeting. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off. We'll call this meeting to order. And we'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Full call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Wheaton.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here. Thank you. Mayor and council comments this evening? Comments this evening? Yes, Andy?
Thank you. Albion College every year celebrates Martin Luther King Jr., usually the week after Martin Luther King Day because our semester starts after Martin Luther King Jr. Day. This year, the city of Albion native Dr. Ruth Holland Scott, politician, author, activist, and teacher, will be speaking at the Bohm Theater on Tuesday, January 27th at 7:00 p.m. The title of her talk is "From Albion to America: Community, Civil Rights, Civil Wrongs, and the Dream." Preceding that 7:00 p.m. event, there will be a community reception at the Lewis Chapel AME Church from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. The AME Church is at 522 West Center Street, so I encourage any and all people to come and attend this really great convocation and community celebration with Dr. Ruth Holland Scott. Thank you.
Andy? Are you reading that off of an agenda?
No, I'm reading it off of a poster.
It doesn't follow my agenda, but, okay. Yes?
The community reception is actually on Sunday.
Oh, you're right. You're right. You're right.
Sunday from 3:00 to 5:00.
So it is preceding. It's preceding it by two days.
Okay.
And two hours.
All right.
Thank you, Councilman Kraus.
Something didn't sound right there, but, okay. Thank you. Yes. Is there any further counsel? Yes. Bill?
You might add that Ms. Holland, as was known, is a graduate of Alvin High School. Born and raised in Alvin, and her father was a city councilperson. And he was responsible for the demolition of Westwood School. She is quite well-known, and her whole family is quite well-known. They're all of asset to Albion.
Thank you.
And the park that we are working on is named after Mr. Holland.
Great.
If there's no further, I'll follow the agenda, just a lot of plays, but that's okay. Citizens' comments, persons addressing the city council, to limit their comments to agenda items only, and no more than five minutes. Proper protocol and decorum is required. Are there any citizens' comments on the agenda this evening? Sina, thank you. Presentations. We'll have an assessing update with Julie, if you would come forward, please. And your name, what you do.
Hi, I'm Julie Kane Derwin, and thank you for inviting me tonight. I am contracted to Albion through Marshall to perform assessing functions, as well as my new assistant, William Dop, who, as a young man, he's always wanted to be an assessor. I couldn't believe that, because people don't usually aspire to do that. And he's doing a very nice job. And he will be in here on Wednesdays with me, and Thursday mornings. Sometimes schedules need to change a little bit, but generally, that's our time we're here. This is a good time to give a report. Is that loud enough or too loud?
Yeah, you're fine.
Can I stand up straight? I put on your desk there, this horizontal sheet right here. State Tax Commission Analysis for Equalized Valuation. Before I worked in assessing, I worked in the County Equalization Office in Cass County for seven years as deputy director. And this form comes from equalization every year. On the first page, it has a commercial study that they did. They looked at 22 parcels, they went out and appraised them, and they compared their appraised value to the assessed value on these, and came up with a ratio of 48.79%. And they gave us a starting true cash value for the entire class over there on the right. And then industrial was, they had to stratify because three parcels went to Michigan Tribunal, and they were, had a very low value, and that would really bring that 45% down. It was at 38. So, we worked with them. They were very helpful. Roger used to work with the State Tax Commission. Now he is contracted with Calhoun County as a consultant, doing a great job. So, industrial is at 45%, which says that their value has to go up around 9%. So it's the difference between 50 and the 45 times 2, which is not going to go over very well here, I'm sure. But I think last year, there was quite a decrease in industrial. So, it's going back to the same value it was in 2013, it looks like. And also, you see, commercial has about a 3% increase there. Residential, those were both appraisal studies, industrial and commercial. Residential, they do sales study, since there's a lot of sales, we can just use those for residential. We have to work together to make sure we have the same sales that we're using in the studies, so that I have a beginning ratio where they say we should begin somewhere around 55%, which says residential values will be going down 10%, which doesn't mean overall. It may show some neighborhoods may be going up, some may be going down, but it's an overall reduction. On the last page is personal property. I just wanted to point out a couple of things there. Commercial, of that true cash value, 6 million, current law says that if a business has $80,000 or, I put greater than, less than, or true cash value, less than $80,000, it is exempt from taxation. However, they do need to file the exemption. They don't get it automatically. In a future law down below, the 38, total personal property, the 38 million, half of that is a taxable value at 19 million times just the city millage. That includes the operating street waste, debt, service, and recreation, multiplied by the taxable value, shows 380,000 of taxes that will be eliminated in about 10 years for the city. Because they're eliminating personal property taxes. So, any questions on that one? Yes, sir.
So, under residential, you said you were doing it based on a sales study?
Correct.
I recall a couple of years ago, being told that there were only five house sales, or 10 house sales in the city of Albion in one year. And so, my question is, is it, did we sell 88 houses last year? Or are we looking outside of Albion to find those sales? Or?
The sales period is generally two years. It's from October 1st, 2012, through September 30th of 2014.
Right.
And previously to that, we were using a one-year study.
Okay.
Because that was helping residents better, because they were coming down more in the one-year study.
And, and do you separate out, as I recall, there were some, a couple of different kinds of sales, I can't remember what they were called. One was just a regular home sale, but then the other one was facilitated by foreclosure or bank?
We don't count sales that are purchased from banks, family, state sales.
Okay.
They know the people, from your neighbor, special deals like that.
Right.
Just arms-length transactions.
Right.
In which buyer or seller are not under duress.
Right.
Okay, now we have this horizontal form. It's still, it's the same information carried over, the yellow where it says commercial, industrial, carried over. Those are the ratios that were given to me by the county. The orange dots show where I have been making adjustments. You see, they're both positive in commercial and industrial, because it needs to go up. It's a negative $6 million adjustment down in residential. The goal is, where those dots are, to be between 49.01 and 50%. And I am there. I'm not real happy with some of my front foot, square foot values, so I'm still tweaking those. But that's the goal. And then we have to tell the board of review also how much we can give away at board of review, because if we go outside of that 49 to 50, then there's a factor given to us by the county to bring us back into that. And then that factor is applied to all properties in that class. So they will be changed differently than in the assessment. So, we don't want a factor. So, I will tell the board of review that residential, they'll have 673,000 to work with, industrial 214, which is not very much, because they're going to be going up, and they're not going to be too happy. But we do have to point out, it went down last year, which most likely brought their taxable value down. So that's good. Oh, and on the back page is personal property. Again, those are generally just review studies, and they're always at 50% because of the way that they are assessed with using state multipliers. Any questions? So, we do all that, we get to 49, get all the values, the land value is set, and the economic condition factors, another number, and then we go to the board of review, and people come in, and we change values. And the roll gets completed and given to the county beginning of April, and then all assessors take vacations. Let me start again. Okay?
Any questions for Julie? Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Tom Mead, explanation of tax billing and collection.
Tom Mead, Finance Director. As we get ready, or we're in our discussions of renewing the recreation millage and the street millage, there's been a lot of questions about, how much money does the programs get, or the city get, or what? I think Councilmember Kraus had asked, what percent does the city end up with when we do, after a millage? And as you'll see, when we go through here, it's always, it's not always an easy, straightforward answer, because there's other things that factor into this equation. But hopefully, this will give you some idea of what we encounter when we go through here. So if we take that, I think everybody got that handled, didn't they? The first page here, with the comps and numbers. If we look at 2013, citywide, we had a taxable value of 102,531,000, one of the started collection for 2013 taxes. If we do a simple calculation of that, we would divide that number by 1,000, we'd come up with 102,531, times about whatever your millage rate is. And in this example, I'm choosing recreation, since that's one of, that's up for renewal. And we would come up with $153,798 that we would anticipate, in a simple calculation, that the Rec Department would receive. However, if you recall, we have some properties that are exempt from tax. We have some tax abatements and IFTs, et cetera, throughout the city. So even though they have taxable value, they're exempt from paying some of these taxes. So fortunately, the computer system, once all the codes and everything are entered, it knows how to compute that all out. So if you move down the next box, the actual tax that we should receive from that, based on that taxable value of 102 million, is 148,966, not the 153. And that's, again, because of the parcels that are exempt from tax. Then we got to look at, of the properties within our TIPA districts and our DDA district, they are eligible to capture a portion of the taxes that are paid. In this case, in 2013, TIPA was eligible to capture $10,676, or 7.2% of that 148,966 that we're trying to collect. DDA was eligible to capture 2,849. And again, this is just on the recreation millage. So when you net those out, we're looking at trying to capture almost 91% of that 148,000, or in other words, 135,441. We collect those taxes through the end of February. At that time, the county says you can collect no more, you have to stop, hand over everything that's delinquent. In February, from our 2013 taxes, the end of February, we handed over delinquent taxes of $16,802 to the county. So, the net that we would have collected was only 118,639, or basically just shy of 80% of the original 178,000 we're trying to collect. Now, a few other things play into this role, or this equation. If you go down to the next box, during 2013, we also received a check from the county of $18,664 that was from 2012's delinquent taxes. So you get this crossover from one year to the next thing going on. We also had a couple miscellaneous adjustments. We received the pilot payments from the two housing units. There's, I think, some tribunals and some other little adjustments in there. But bottom line is, from the property tax line item in our general ledger, in 2013, we collected 100, we reported 141,879. Now, like I say, includes, you know, after the captures, and after we see delinquent money went to the county, and then they sent us money for the prior year taxes, that's where we ended up. Then another item, another line item on the general ledger that we've added, is these chargebacks, because they've become so significant. We put it as a separate line item, but it nets against that property tax revenue. 2013 chargebacks were $2,336, so they ended up with a net revenue related to property taxes of $139,543. If we jump up to the top again and look at 14, it's very similar, only maybe a little uglier. First thing I'll point out is, you'll notice our taxable value between 2013 and 2014 dropped 6.2%. So instead of being at 102, we're down to 96 million. That, of course, when you do the equation, your simple equation, you're down to starting out at only 144,000 versus almost 154,000. Once you take out the exempt properties, the computers tells us we need to collect The TIPA capture went up this year. That's something we're still researching. We're not really sure why it's jumping up as dramatic as it has. But anyway, they were eligible to capture 12,899. The DDAs, on the other hand, went down significantly, and that was primarily due to the property, personal property tax reform. A lot of the businesses in the downtown development, downtown development district have smaller personal property, they're all under 80,000, so a lot of them were exempt. The state, however, was supposed to make us whole for that. I think out of the 20-some thousand that we lost, overall, citywide and DDA, I think we received a check from the state of around 9,000, if I remember, I think. So we're kind of, we're researching that a little bit, too, trying to figure out the state's calculation and why we weren't entitled to more. But at any rate, we're down to, once you take captures out, we're down to 127,009. Now, I've got a delinquency figure on here of 19,113, but keep in mind, that's as of year-end. We still have two months to collect. So I hope by the time we get to end of February, I'm anticipating we'll probably be closer to something similar of last year, maybe down to 16,000, because they are still trickling in. So, for 14, as of year-end, the Recreation Department was, had 108,810 collected. Again, we got two months to go to collect a little bit more. If you move down to that next box, the 16,000 that I said we had to hand over to the county as delinquent in 2013, they paid us for it in 2014. You'll notice the numbers are a little bit different. That's because the county only pays us for real property tax, not personal property. We're responsible for collecting delinquent personal property tax. So when all is said and done, well, the other thing we had, the big issue in 2014, as well as the Guardian chargeback, if you look down, you see that $17,449 in chargebacks, $13,008 of which was for Guardian.
Yeah.
So thankfully, those types of things don't happen often. But in the 141,000 that we hope to collect, I mean, right now Recreation's looking at having 107,000 to use. So, like I said, there's, there's a lot of things that go into that. It's never simple to say, how much are we going to make from the millage, because there's a lot of things that factor into that. But, does anyone have any questions on that page? And hopefully, that kind of explains, or gives you an idea of the percentage.
Thanks, Tom.
Look into the next page, just some interesting facts here, I guess, if you will. I just went back a number of years, just kind of curiosity, when I was playing around with this, some things jumped out at me, so I decided to put them down on paper, share them. 2009, you can see, we peaked in our taxable value, 135,647,790. But if you look in the far-right column, 2007 was actually the year that we peaked in revenues. And if you look, it's because that millage rate in 2007 was a couple mills higher. So even though our taxable values weren't as high, our millage rate was high enough that it overs, or offset that, and we actually peaked revenues in 2007. And of course, you can see where we're at 2014.
The $20 million correction in 2010.
Pardon me?
The $20 million correction in 2010, 2011.
Yeah, big drop. If you flip the page, you're exactly right. The, I broke it off, the top half of the sheet is looking at taxable values, where the bottom half is looking at revenue. And you're exactly right, 2010 to 2011, the county had their audit, or the state come in, did their audit, and we got dinged, and had to do a pretty substantial adjustment to get the county, the state to, or to comply with the state's recommendations. You can see that was a 14.7% drop. But what's interesting is, if you look at the year we peaked of 2009, versus where we're at today of 2014, we have dropped 39,510,000 in taxable value, which is huge, a stupid percent. Going down, what's that mean in revenues? If you look at where we peaked in 2007, versus where we're at now in 2014, that's 500, just shy of 550,000 a year, citywide, that we are losing out on from this drop of, from the drop of taxable value. And the final page, just a couple little additional facts. I think Julie kind of referenced or alluded to a few of these, but just to let everybody know, the personal property tax reform, from 2013 to 2014, when the $80,000 and smaller rule went into play, we had about a million nine drop off the roll. And beginning in '16, going through 2013, we will have another 19,612,000 drop off of that, at least based on today's taxable value, values, that's what would drop off. Now, I've often been accused by our new city manager of being the bearer of bad news. And she says, you can't come into my office unless you have some good news, too. So is there any good news on it? Well, I guess a couple of things. Number one, when I looked at this, I thought, first of all, I thought, I'm shocked that we're doing as well as we are, when I see this kind of drop or decline. I think that says a lot for all of us, that, you know, it's makes, had to make tough cuts and continue operating the best we can under this kind of condition. And the other thing, too, regarding that 19,612,000 that will drop off, under the current law, the state has promised they will make us whole. I believe when I see it, I hope they do. The current plan is with the new law, I think, probably heard about not too long ago, where now any internet sales, or you got to pay sales tax on internet sales, and a few other laws they've passed, that money's all going to go into a pool or a pot. And we're at the bottom, the cities are at the bottom of that pot, but in their forecasts, they have guaranteed that there will be enough to make the municipalities whole. When all is said and done, I think the schools are top of the priority, they get the first reimbursement or first round. Then essential services get the second round. Seems like there's another one in there, and the city municipalities are on the bottom. But they, according to their projections, they're saying there'll be enough there to make us whole, so we'll see. Any questions?
I would, but I'm afraid of the answer.
Yeah, I was going to say. Tom, thank you. This has really clarified a lot of things for me. I know I was, I've been bugging you about it, but this is, this is very clear. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And the next time you come and talk to us, would you please bring much better news?
Or, or cookies.
Or cookies, yeah.
What kind of cookie? I better ask right now.
Anything else?
Thank you, Tom. Wow. The consent calendar. Approval of regular session minutes from January 5th, 2015.
Some moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes. Items for individual discussion. A, request for approval of recommendation from the Citizens Advisory Committee to place recreation and street renewal millage on the May 5th, 2015 ballots.
Some will support.
Moved and supported. Questions? Yes, Andy?
Just as a, sort of a follow-up, given what we just heard, we are, the advisory committees make a recommendation for renewal, because it's a faster, easier thing to do than to say, let's go for two mills for rec, because we wouldn't be able to get that done in time to appear on the ballot in May. Is that my understanding?
Correct. Any further questions? See none, roll call, hold place.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Wheaton.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. B, request for approval of resolution two thousand and fifteen dash oh one to approve ballot language to renew recreation levy of one point five mills for three years.
Omo support.
Moved and supported, questions?
If I could just point out that, uh, what you have before you is a resolution that would approve the renewal of the recreation millage at the current rate of one point five mills for three years, with an anticipated, um, revenue, um, being generated of one hundred and forty-one thousand. As you just heard from the finance report, uh, that's actually much needed, and is definitely not even as much as we collected in prior years because of declining values, so it's really imperative that we try to get this, um, this on the ballot, this residents to consider.
Correct.
And one of the questions that is most often answered is, what is the impact to the average resident? And assuming the, um, average value for Albion home of approximately sixty-eight thousand, the impact of the recreation millage is approximately fifty dollars on their tax bill, which is not an increase.
Correct.
Fifty-one dollars.
Any further questions? If not, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wheaton.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Request for approval of resolution two thousand and fifteen dash two to approve ballot language to renew street levy of three mills for five years.
So moved.
Moved and supported, questions? Yes, Bill?
Are we, each of these have different groups gonna promote that, or is it gonna be just...
It's gonna be the same group, I do believe, promoting both. Same advisory committee.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? See none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wheaton.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Discussion updated on the Albion Recycling Center, Cheryl?
I just wanted to give you a brief update that we have been working with Calhoun County relative to the, um, the new format for the recycling center. It's going to go from the unmanned center to one that actually has staff present, along with volunteers, um, so it will be closed for that transition, the first week of February, basically, February second through the tenth, opening on February eleventh. The hours will be Wednesday from ten to six, and on Saturday from ten to two. Uh, so they will also be looking for volunteers, so if there are any individuals or groups that would like to help out, they would more than welcome them. I just wanted to make everyone aware and the public aware that we are changing the format. Um, this increases the quality of the, um, the products that are actually put into the recycling stream. So, that was one of the main reasons to look at this new approach.
Thank you.
A lot of people throwing garbage away.
Any questions? Yes.
I'm, I'm really encouraged by the fact that, uh, they're gonna now take all plastics instead of just one and two. Um, and I think that it's a really excellent thing that they're taking pretty much everything that they used to take, um, so I'm really excited about this possibility.
And I have asked a representative to come to, I think it's your second meeting in February, to make a presentation and get more details.
Thank you.
And I'm sure this will be put in the paper and everything.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, E, discussion slash approval of the Albion Community Foundation grant.
So moved.
Did you, did you...
I, so moved.
Second.
Moved and supported, Cheryl?
Okay, just to give you a brief update, as you recall, last meeting, um, Elizabeth Schultze presented the check to Councilmember Reed for the, um, the Houghton Park renovation for twenty thousand, and this is just the documentation to officially accept that grant.
No further questions, roll call, please.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Wheaton.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Discussion to set date for two thousand and fifteen citywide goals, based on department and agencies.
Well, this was the request of council, so I just needed some guidance in terms of if there are some particular dates I wanted to look at, are we looking at an evening meeting, a special, a special meeting, you know, before or after your regular meetings, just some idea of what you have in mind, or what works best with everyone's schedule. Um, I, I know, um, Councilmember Brown was one of those, uh, was Mr. French, relative to, um, pushing this forward.
Right. Mayor, remind me, the last time we did one of these formal goal settings, we were at the Ismen House, and wasn't it on a Saturday? No?
I think it was one of our off nights.
We had, I do believe, two nights during the week.
Was it, okay.
And, uh, I wanna say it was either like a Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah.
Normally, and there usually somewhere's two to three hours.
Right.
At the most, so.
Right.
Uh, so is that what we wanna do, is that we wanna do something like that?
Yeah, I think so.
I can circulate some dates now that I have the parameters.
Right.
It's most people's schedule.
We're thinking two nights in a row, is that what you're...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I think we went through all the departments, that was...
That's right.
PCE, everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
And they came in and told us what their goals were for the year, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Do you need any more information from us?
Did you want to eat?
Yeah.
Okay. It's your budget.
That's why I'm looking at it.
I know.
It depends on what you mean by eat.
Food.
Like a whole meal or snacks?
Yes.
Like very light refresh.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Okay.
Sandwiches?
I'll bring you one more.
Ruben?
I'll bring you a sandwich.
Okay, cool. Ruben.
So, okay, uh, board and commission appointments. Maurice Barnes, initial appointment to Building Board of Appeals, term to expire, twelve thirty-one, at two thousand and seventeen.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Future agenda items.
East Erie.
Twenty thirteen. Number H.
H. Yeah. Caught out the lens.
Oh, the request for...
Yeah.
Sorry, I got ahead of myself and marked it all. Request for approval of resolution two thousand and fifteen dash oh three to approve transfer of one twelve East Erie Street from the city of Albion to the Albion...
Building Authority.
Building Authority, the ABA.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, questions? That is the food hub on Erie Street that, uh, the city did, and now it has to go back into the ABA's hands.
Does anybody have a status report on that building?
As far, which status, on Erie or on...
On Erie, on Erie Street, the, the building that the food hub's going into. We had a presentation in the fall...
Yes.
From the new executive director. We haven't seen, I haven't seen anything going on.
They are working with an architect at this point in time to get the fundamentals of, you know, what needs to be the layout with the refrigerators and, and all of that, so.
But all the, the infrastructure in terms of electricity, the roof and all that, that's all been done?
The roof has been done, and no part of the electrical has.
Okay.
Uh, not all of it, because that falls into the category of the architect.
Sure, sure.
Because we're trying to figure out where, because there's four apartments upstairs, we're trying to figure out where we can stub this so that we can continue up, but shut it off, where we don't have to interrupt anything down below.
Right, I get it.
So, that's taking a little bit of time.
Right, right, okay. Do we have a timetable?
Yeah, do we have a timetable?
Uh, yeah, soon as possible.
Oh, okay.
Well, I guess, I guess, a follow-up to that is...
I know it fell a little longer, I know we were, we were trying to be in there early this year, I think we fell behind, and now it's gonna be later on in the year. Uh, I'll get them to come in and give us more status on that.
Is it a fundraising problem, revenue problem?
No, I think what happened, the grants are there.
Right.
I think the prices of some of the things come in more than what the grants.
What they were.
So.
Makes sense.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So, we're still working on that.
Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Future vote.
Councilmember Wheaton.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yeah.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Future agenda items. Are there any future agenda items? Yes.
Um, I'm not sure who or what, but, um, I think we need to get the cable TV people back here. Um, I'm getting a lot of questions and quite a few complaints about the way that the cable systems are working right now, as far as the rates going up, as far as the, uh, payments not being processed in a timely manner. Um, I, I, I think we need to, since they are the only game in town, I think we need to get them in and tell them that we're not really happy right now.
And I do as well. Now, I don't know, do we wanna, we did away with the...
Right.
Board.
Right.
Let's see how that works. I know Cheryl, uh, you're working with them, I know some issues have been taken care of, but I think it was because of the timeframe that we fell into, it just happened to work this time, so. But I got another phone call over the weekend, you know, concerning the price hikes for the seniors, I guess it went up for everybody, I don't know, I don't have cable, so, um, but I guess it, I don't know if it went up, what was it, ten or twenty dollars per month or something like that? So, there are some concerns out there that need to be addressed, and then how they're making their payments, the issue that you and I ran into.
Yes.
So, if they wanna come at a council meeting and address that, that's fine.
Okay, I'll, I'll invite them.
Okay, and we'll see what we can do from there, but in the meantime, we need to...
Okay.
Work on them, see what we can get done, so.
Yep.
Yes.
The status, I think the status of the Dollar General store, I haven't seen no movement or anything.
There is no movement, that was, that property went back, and they're staying right where they're at at this point in time.
Okay.
Okay?
And also, I just spoke with Peggy Smith just last week in regards to it, and she had no additional information also, other than they are, there are no current plans relative to what they have proposed.
Correct. I, I don't know what happened, I, I know we were all set to, to make that move, and they came back in, and everybody had backed out of it, so, you know, and...
Interesting.
They're staying right where they're at at this point in time that I'm aware, so. Any further? If not, uh, motion to excuse Councilman Barnes?
So moved.
Did he call?
Brown.
Yeah, he went in to have his topics taken.
I'm here.
No way!
I'm here!
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
I am here. You said Barnes.
You meant Brown.
So, that means we need to...
Excuse me.
We need to drop off some ice cream at, uh, Councilman Brown's house.
Anyone who wants to bend his ear and he can't talk back to you.
Ooh! Can we bring him to the goal session, as is? Let's schedule that right away, shall we?
Right. It's been moved and supported?
I didn't even support.
Support.
Oh, that's right, that's when I said Barnes. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Uh, citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes and proper decor as required. Are there any citizens' comments this evening?
Would like to comment?
Come forward with your name and address, please.
Thank you very much, sir. My name is Ismael Lopez, I reside at two seventeen West Center Street here in Albion. I'm better known as Little Mike Lopez, and I would just like the opportunity to tell you guys that I appreciate the opportunity to come to your meetings and learn more about the city government, and I have every intention in involving myself in the future plans for our great city of Albion, and I hope to rally some other citizens around me so they can get more involved as well. Those are my comments, and I appreciate you letting me address you guys.
Thank you very much. Are there any further? Forward with your name and address, please.
Mike Bearman, one one oh one six, Twenty-Nine Mile Road. Glad to see you again. Uh, sorry I was a little late, um, I was at Sheridan Township Meeting before coming here, because like I said, I'm trying to make all of the township meetings and the city and the village meeting of Homer, so, I'm here to hear your, um, thoughts, and if you've got anything for me to take back to the county. Like to also say that with what Cheryl was talking about, um, I saw the, oh, news release that came out on the, oh...
Recital?
The Recycling Center, and with, um, when the Health Department was talking about that to us, they were, um, telling us that this is what the model, they want the model to be. So, it's coming a long ways, and I'm really glad to see what you guys are doing with that. That was part from the county. Now, the next part is from the school system, which I am now the president of the Board of Education, and I don't know if you've gotten it in the past, but we put out a monthly newsletter that's distributed around the city, different places. If you haven't gotten them, we need to get them to you. And I will give this one to you guys to go around and look at, and it shows a little bit of what we are doing throughout the month, um, and a lot of the things that's going on up there. The pool is done, the roof is done.
Okay.
I believe, so, um, we'll find out, we'll find out in the spring when the rains come. But anyway, things are starting to look a lot, lot better up there all the time, and they're coming a long ways, and we need to, we still need to get together sometime and sit down, um, make sure you guys all see what's going on and the cooperation we've got with everybody else. Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Anyone else?
Who's that ugly bug in the back?
I see no further comments, so.
So moved.
Do I have a...
Support.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cheryl has some, I'm sorry. Can I say right there, just told her to say?
How about that? Okay, well, first, I want to, um, take a moment to introduce an intern from Albion College. Danielle, if you'll come to the microphone even, she didn't know I was gonna do that to her. She is a student at Albion College, and as you, uh, may recall, we have an internship program going with the, um, the Gerald Ford Institute and Patrick McLean, and she was one of the first ones on board, and I couldn't be more excited. She's an exceptional young lady, very, um, very bright, very energetic, and I wish we can get a hundred more just like her. Um, already, and keep in mind, she's only been here one week. Already, she, the projects she's working on are the community forums that we want to set up in all of the precincts, the master plan updates, website updates, uh, biking program, if you're familiar with the Slow Roll that they have in downtown Detroit, you know, something, we could bring something like that here, um, the housing rehab and light removal, looking at how we can be more assertive in doing that, and, um, the recycling center. So, I, again, I just wanted to introduce her so you know who she is when she's in the office, and thank you for being here and supporting.
Welcome.
Also, I wanted to mention to you at your next meeting on February second, we will have a pre-meeting, um, at six thirty with Honeywell, so they can give us an update on the energy efficiencies they have done in phase one and two, and a proposal for phase three, which is for, um, for the, um, City Hall building itself, and so you can consider those proposals as well and get us, get an update. So, that's six thirty, February second.
And next week, the agenda will be out, because the following week is the council meeting.
Right, that's what I...
We'll have a long time.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, it's a meeting before the council meeting, or is it a part of the council meeting?
Before the council meeting.
And then the regular meeting.
Yes, and they'll be making the formal presentation during the meeting itself in case you can't make that.
Question, please, group?
Yes.
Have you announced to the public the, uh, where to go on for all, all the council meetings to be able to see?
You can go on YouTube and just look up, um, Albion City Council, and our officially recorded meetings are available to view, so to anyone who has internet, just can access it through the YouTube channel.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any further?
I'd just like to say, I, I appreciate the messages that we've been from Mrs. Mitchell, because a lot of times I get really, really busy with the Holland Park thing, and I just kinda lost, and I, the one that came through the other day was really, really helpful, and so.
And I've started the e-newsletter, so it's available to anyone who's interested, just let me know your email address, and I'll add you to the list, always available to anyone.
Yes.
I would just like to thank Colin, because each and every time I call him, he calls me back, he calls me back with the information, and I really appreciate Bob winning associate, very seriously, seriously, thank you, because I know I interrupt you sometimes, and you come right back, thank you.
My pleasure.
I would like to join in that, because I probably bother him more than the average city manager did, but, um, I do appreciate not only how promptly he responds, but his professionalism in, in just supporting us as a city, he really does a tremendous job, so.
Well, I got some, no.
Say, don't make him feel too good, he'll up his speed.
Exactly. You know how those lawyers are.
Ah, yeah.
So, if there is no furthermore, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.